Calling the work session to order for February thirteenth. I'd like to thank our officers that came in, Cooper and Contras, appreciate ya. Let's, uh, let's go to the consent agenda. I need a motion in a second.
Actually, Mr. Chair.
Actually, Mr. Chair, it's just a work session, so we can just ask if there's any, any questions about it.
Well, oh yeah, that's right, no motion, that's, we're not voting on it tonight, okay, my mistake. Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. Think we can move right along? Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as you all know, we've made a decision to bring you all a draft budget ahead of our traditional schedule. Just as a reminder, we have an obligation to get our budget to the commission before April first, and they have actually scheduled their first review, Rachel, if I'm not mistaken, the last week in March.
March twenty-fourth.
March twenty-fourth is their first scheduled meeting, but we want to get this to you in February as a rough draft, so that you all have time to ask questions of us. So Rachel has prepared a rough draft, we've left a hard copy at each of your, at each of your workstations there. My experience is, it's nice having a hard copy, because you can flip from page to page, because there's so many interrelationships between those. Included in that packet, we have a draft supplement schedule, I think Rachel put it in the front, in the front pocket. Rachel's going to give you a PowerPoint describing the, the core pieces of, of this draft budget. Mixed in her PowerPoint, Vicky Hall is going to take over for a little bit, to discuss some of the pay issues that we, that we have addressed in there. And I've got one other preface, and then I'm going to turn it over to Rachel to give you all the PowerPoint. And, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll invite, however you guys want to handle it with questions, a- as, as these, as these slides come up versus waiting, my gut tells me probably we're better off with just questions as they come. Uh, just, just based on the volume of what Rachel's going to present.
There's a couple of places where I may say, there's, let's get through one slide, and then we'll go back to it, but other than that, sure.
Okay. Uh, so, so, uh, the, the other piece is, is what I know you all know, which is, the revenue side of the budget is, is, is really unknown at this point. We have some basics that Rachel's going to share with you. Uh, we don't have a lot of detail from the state yet on, on what their budget plans are, but we just heard a little bit of a hint the day before yesterday at the TSBA meeting, related to budget. The, what we think of as a cost of living increase has traditionally come at the state level. We have not heard anything directly from the state, but the TSBA meeting did share with us that they projected a little bit less than a three percent increase in the TISA base. Uh, so based on what we heard the day before yesterday, Rachel's made some adjustments there, uh, and again, this is a work in progress. So with that, Rachel?
Thank you very much. Uh, as Mr. Golden said, you do have the packet in front of you, and so, we'll take it piece by piece, uh, as we go through each section. That's where I'm saying, let's get through the section, and then we'll, um, follow up with questions along each, um, after each. And so, uh, as you go through your packet, we're going to talk about enrollment personnel, um, our general purpose school fund, central cafeteria fund, extended school program fund, and then capital projects is how we'll, we'll end it. So, we're going to start, sorry, there's your, these are the things we're going to touch on tonight. And then, um, first thing, when you go through your actual binder, starting on page six, you're going to see, um, information about projected enrollment, and, uh, it's broken down by school. It's got EC and pre-K is included, um, in the first couple of columns on that, but then, um, K-12 is listed out. And so, what's on the slide in front of you is just where our current enrollment is, and then, at the top are the numbers for projected. So as you can see, we are looking at projecting that we are going to go down in enrollment, um, about three hundred students total. Hundred and fifty within K-12, and a hundred and fifty between EC and pre-K. Having said that, that's going to be starting the year, um, as children qualify, they'll pick up within, um, EC as we go along. So do you have any, anything you want to talk about related to enrollment? Yes, sir.
So last year, I think I remember correctly, that it was point seven, whoops, a point four-six growth? And now it's, I'm just curious how you got to the negative growth.
I, I can speak to that, um, Allison Nunley.
It was, it was close, but.
Yeah, Allison Nunley and her team, uh, got information from local developers, and from the municipalities, uh, and projected out what we expected with growth. We are actually projecting a reduction in total students this year, uh, and that's that, um, uh, actually.
If you'll go to page six, and you're, and the numbers are at the bottom.
Yeah, we were actually, we were actually projecting a reduction in total student enroll, enrollment by forty-four hundredths of a percent. Minus point four-four, that's based on those projections. We believe that, uh, we are going to have more seniors graduate this year than kindergarteners. So that's the main, that's the main issue.
I just, how did they figure that, Jason? You know, with all the growth we see, apartments, subdivision after subdivision, and yet, we're not projecting growth, what?
What we've seen is, we have seen some, some growth at the middle school level, but not at the elementary level. Uh, so if, if we boil down to each individual class, we see some growth in most of those grade levels, but the graduating seniors number is so much larger than the number of kindergarteners coming in. I'll tell you my, my interpretation. The cost of buying a house is getting much more difficult for those young families. Uh, and so, they're, they're used to, well, this tradition is still there. A lot of private schools in, in, in the Nashville area will have a, a jump in enrollment at the middle school level. Uh, families might be okay in, in so, in some counties with their children attending elementary school, but they save up for middle school. Uh, I think we're seeing some hint of that in the context of buying a house. Uh, that they're, they're finding a way to move in a few years into their, into their family, in a way that's, that's new. And really, if this happens, this is the, really the third year of this trend. So, um, that's, it, and, so Allison does statistical analyses of, of each of the neighborhoods, and how many children are in each, in each home. Our software allows us to pinpoint exactly where each child is at each particular house. She can do polygons around those areas and project neighborhood numbers. Um, so it's really a combination of all those. But she starts with how many students are matriculating from one grade to the next. So we start with who we have, and then we project growth, um, over, over and above that. And it's not an exact science, it's a, it's an estimate.
Okay, any, any more questions?
Okay, the next section, um, we're, we're going to discuss is personnel. So if you'll go ahead and you can turn over to pages, starting on page eight. And we talked about staffing standards a couple of months ago. Uh, we have to submit every year to the state what our staffing standards are, and how, again, just a reminder that those ensure that we are providing the same services at every school. Uh, and so we're looking at our enrollment, and then what our teacher, uh, to student ratios are, to make sure that we're staffing accordingly. There were things that are, there's a memo that goes along with that when we rep, um, send it to the state, when we submit it to the state. And a couple of the items on the staffing standards, everything, for the most part, is what we've already been doing. We just went ahead and added the verbiage onto the actual staffing standard, and are going to take it out of the memo. It can be in either place, but we just felt like it was cleaner for everybody to see in one spot what those, what those items are. And so, there were adjustments, those are going to be red, that's what you're seeing in red, or any adjustments that were made, or, or wording added. But things like, um, assistant superintendent ratio at middle school, we have one that's a, a very large middle school, and so there was an adjustment to it, elementary school, same thing for that higher number, where we had just not had enrollment that high before, and we felt like it was time to add an additional line, um, onto those standards. And so those are the kinds of things, you're going to see a, a line in there about, uh, middle school and high school music art and P, that's something that's normally been in the memo, we're putting it onto the staffing standard. Um, so if you have any questions about that, about the staffing standards themselves, feel free to ask.
And I, I did want to add one piece, one of the, one of the standards we set, um, for, for budget was to stick to the staffing standards strictly this year. Uh, so as, as we went through that, we looked at each, each one of our schools. Uh, we sometimes have spots where we, we notice there might, we might need some specific help with a specific issue, uh, especially with students with disabilities, we identified that, um, with, with assistant principal work, to make sure there's more people to, to, to perform those services. That's an example of, of where the staffing standard might have changed. Um, uh, you might notice on your document, I know, Rachel, you haven't gotten there quite yet, because you're still talking about the staffing standard, but, um, our position control report actually shows a net reduction in staff, uh, from, from the current year.
At the bottom of page six, what are strings?
Orchestra.
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 Stringed instruments, yes.
So.
Just a quick question, under elementary, the coaches are marked out, so, but then it has two total per school, so what, are the schools getting to decide what they need, or?
That was just a word that had not been in there before, um, and so they do get, let me make sure I'm not speaking out of turn. But, we, we've provided a literacy and a math coach in each, and it just didn't say total, so we added total.
So, no, they don't decide, they have a literacy coach and a math coach.
Oh, well, the stripe through is what, it, it looks like those are struck through, and I didn't know what the, okay, gotcha.
So should it say two?
On page eight, on elementary, where the coaches, it, there's a strike through, coaches per building, one math, one literacy.
If you look right above that, the wording says math and literacy coaches, two total per school.
Correct, but I didn't know if it was a change, or, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Or if the schools were going to get to decide, maybe they need to literacy coaches instead of math coaches.
I see what you're saying, we were just trying to clean up the chart, and it probably, probably reflects poorly, but that's actually not a change.
I had a similar quite, well, a little different, but, um, I've been in talk with some of my middle schools, and, um, I know that, and I think Superintendent Golden, I think we've talked about this, where there's a situation where, you know, in a middle school team, say, sixth grade, you have three English teachers, three math teachers, three social studies, and then we have two science teachers.
Yeah.
And I think that, that, I'd like to see us have equality, you know, where we have, because that puts a lot on those science teachers, where we have the same, where some, one subject area isn't carrying, you know, thirty-three percent more workload.
Yeah.
And so, I know those are harder, maybe to fill, but I think that's really important.
Well, thank you for that, and I, I will invite Dr. Webb potentially to speak to that, to this. So when we set up our staffing standards, it's based on the pupil teacher ratio, and then the principals need to set schedules based on that. So it is possible that there might be, for example, a CTE program, that's, that's getting its start at a middle school, or to Dr. Digger's point, perhaps a strings, um, where a principal is, is trying to structure a schedule that allows there to be more options for the students. Um, Dr. Webb, anything else you want to add to that? But you're right, those, those are difficult times, sometimes where the, where the ratio of, uh, the pupil teacher ratio may be different for a particular class. Um, and I know, uh, Grassland Middle has had that very example, I think that's the one you and I were talking about.
Yeah, it's hard on morale, when they see they're getting, you know, more, and they have labs to set up, and it's a lot more work. And then I have one more question, um, when you say the, I think, I wrote this down, the PCR, the net reduction, there's a net reduction in staff, is there certain areas that there is, or did you, just across the board?
We'll get there in just a minute.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, I jumped ahead on, on Rachel myself, so I apologize for that.
So do we have any data to support the, um, all the instructional coaching positions that are in place? Like what type of impact that they're having? Because it looks like we have at least two per school, and in high school, it might be even more, if it's over, it looks like one coach per five hundred. I'm just wondering, do we, and if we do, I'd like to see it, so.
Thank you for that question, we do, we do have data, um, from a scientific standpoint, of course, there are a lot of variables. Uh, but, uh, we do, we, we have some data related to the, uh, experience level of our teachers as well. Uh, and I know Dr. Allen and I especially have had some deep conversations about that. I will say that our, um, our instructional leadership has actually asked for some additional supports for those coaches, because we know that, that, uh, enabling all teachers to grow and become better teachers, especially in, in, in helping students identify the standards and making adjustments based on those common formative assessments, it continues to have a premium. Um, but yeah, we'll make sure that we get you some data related to that. Um, our team is convinced that, um, the, the, the schedule that we've gone through with focusing on, uh, professional learning teams, common formative assessments, and then having the coaches work with the teachers to make adjustments, is a key reason that we are continuing to grow. Uh, so we'll get you some, some objective data, plus we can share some, we, we can share some qualitative information as well. Dr. Allen, is anything, is there anything you'd like to add to that, at this point?
I, I think it's a good point, we, we've talked about finding better ways to quantify the impact. We qualitatively see it, anecdotally see it, on a daily basis. One of the things that, that I would suggest from a board perspective, that we could offer up is for you to do a walk-along with them during the day. So for example, um, you know, our, our, our teacher candidate pools, as Mr. Golden mentioned, are much more shallow than they have historically been. The coaches are a vital part throughout the school year, in helping those new teachers progress, but quantifiably working to see the number of cycles that our coaches, um, um, are working with our teachers on, and what specific goals they have with the teachers. And then the data will be specific to that individual teacher in that individual classroom, and the outcomes of those individual students. So we're looking to wrap our arms more around the quantifiable part, but while we do that, um, I would invite you anytime to, to, to come and do a walk-along with us, so you can actually see in action what it looks like. Um, I think it might be, might be a good opportunity for you.
Do, just a question about the literacy coaches before we move on. Do they work at all with the students, or do they just work solely with the teachers?
Good question, thank you for that. So, um, the, so we are interventionist, when, when we get to the part in the budget where we talk about interventionists. Those interventionists work with our students who are in what we call tier three, the most, um, needed academic supports. Their schedule is filled from the minute that they get in the building to the minute that they leave, uh, in the evening, working with students. We run that as lean as we possibly can. We actually meet annually to look specifically at the exact numbers that each building has in terms of, uh, tier three students, and we move the interventionists to the need of the, uh, of the building, which causes, uh, some, some conversation in the building, because we're moving people, and it, it, we kind of move their cheese a little bit. So those are really identified to work with the students. Your question about the coaches, in almost every building, there is an extra group or two, because we run the interventionist so lean, where the coaches will have to provide that tier three service for the students. So instead of, for example, when we have, um, uh, we would run into a, a net positive where a, an interventionist would have a, a, a block in their schedule by over allocating, we actually intentionally under allocate the interventionists, because then we'll have the coaches, um, uh, work with the students, um, to make sure that we're running that as lean as possible with those, with those interventions.
So the coaches might model lessons, uh, in classes that do have an assigned teacher to grow those teachers, but many of them also would have a group, um, uh, for RTI, tier three intervention. But that, that varies a little bit from school to school, based on those who are identified as tier three.
We don't have any other questions related to the staffing standards.
One question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, so we said two total per school, so we have one, one math, one literacy.
That's correct.
It just, okay. And that's in, okay, gotcha, gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Golden, if I may, that's just K-eight, at the high school, we just have one instructional coach per building. I'm sorry, did you, did you point that out?
I mean, it says one instructional coach for school, so only the schools over five hun- oh, okay, I was thinking it was like one instructional coach per five hundred kids, okay, got it. So just one coach.
Yeah, and so, so, yeah, Renaissance and the ALC, um, are sharing that help.
Glad you asked, because I didn't have it writing.
Okay.
One thing I should have said to start with, and I'm realizing I didn't. We're going to go through this, and you're, take it home, and then you're going to have a hundred questions that are going to come up. And that's why we were like, go ahead, we'll go ahead and do this in February, so you can ask those questions, you've got plenty of time to ask. What traditionally is going to happen, you're going to ask a question, and it's going to be something that somebody else has thought and hasn't asked yet, or wondered about but didn't actually ask. So when we, when you send a question, we, that we, that would be Jason, myself, Vicky, whoever is answering the question, we'll send it back to the whole board, so you can see what's been asked, and it just helps everybody, um, clarify where we are. And then, when we come back in March and actually present the budget to you, if there are questions that came up over and over that we need to discuss, where everybody publicly can hear what those questions were and the answers, we provide that then, um, as well. So I'm saying that to you, take your time, do not feel panicked right now of, well, you just handed this to me, how am I supposed to know what to ask? We didn't expect you to. Um, clearly, you're going to have some questions as we go along, but the expectation is, is you are going to have questions. Call, email, and, and then we'll answer those, okay?
So just to reemphasize, you're not going to thank everything you want to ask to, to, tonight, so please feel free to ask over these next few weeks.
Okay, so page eleven starts the PCR, um, and that's the position control report we talked about. Principals cannot wait to get their PCR, because this kind of projects for them what their staffing, uh, would look like in the coming year, so that they can help with hiring. Again, I can't say it enough, this whole thing, I even put rough draft, um, on it, didn't even put draft. This is the bones of it. Um, we don't have any information to, hard information on revenues yet, so it's hard to give you a budget when I don't know what that side's going to be. Every day, we get closer to the, to the end of the year, we know more about what our spending looks like in our current year. So just reminders of, of that. Same thing with the PCR, there's going to be changes that could happen within it, because we have open enrollment, so kids could go be, open enroll to another school, and that school's population may go up, and we may have to adjust, so that school would get adjustments. Um, and again, Mr. Golden said, the net reduction was thirty-five point six positions, and Ms. Clements, to your question, most of that is in the teacher line, because we are adjusting to staffing standards based on enrollment. Yes. And let me say, that doesn't mean that teachers are losing their jobs. What that means is there's people retiring, there's natural attrition, people have moved, um, any number of things, and so no, we do not necessarily, we're not saying that thirty-five teachers are, are looking to lose their job, that's not the case at all. Through, um, possible shifts, I think that's where we've landed.
It's a reflection of the forty-four hundredths of a percent reduction.
Yes. Yes, sir.
I'm looking on page eleven, under health services, other medical professionals, is that where we have the mental health folks?
No.
I've been looking into the mental health of students, and, uh- I've been looking into the mental health of students and I wonder where ours are.
So health services, other medical professionals, if I'm not mistaken, Rachel, I'll let you answer.
Most, it's nurses. It still is nurses. A lot of it is the school nurses, but then we have other, every school has a nurse. But then we have other nurses that are coming in and doing extra services as well.
And if I'm not mistaken, some of these services that we provide to students with disabilities are actually included in that? Is that right?
If it's medically related.
So we can get you some detail of those positions. I'll make sure we get you some detail of those. But it is not mental health professionals.
We, the first few pages again are a summary. All the sheets behind it are related to the individual schools or, and then there's countywide employees. And what that means is that they don't necessarily serve one school. They could serve multiple schools depending on what the role is. And all of that data is there. Those spreadsheets all pull into this summary sheet. And so I have put out beside, anytime there was a change, I kind of went ahead and told you what that change was. I have a confession to make. This, this PCR summary looks a little bit busier because we have tried to clean some things up. People are called, one thing, which it was named twenty years ago and the state's come back and called it something else. And so we're moving positions. So you'll see several times within the PCR reclass to item below. And we're just moving it between lines. There's no change in pay. It's just reclassifying it so it actually matches what the state's given us. One of those items were the coaches. That is something that this year, we're actually going to have to come back probably with you for a budget amendment to shift money because the state came out in the chart of accounts and said you have to list the coaches. They can't be listed as a teacher. They need to be listed separately. And so part of moves that you're seeing on this chart, again, not new positions. It's just pushing them into separate or new, new lines. That's going to take y'all some time to look through, fully understand that. So you may not have a question right now. Again, as you dig into it, feel free to ask.
And Rachel, as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking that other health professionals is largely occupational therapists and physical therapists. Some of those, some of those services that we're providing.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Rachel, could you give us a little explanation of like page thirty-four? Is this like trying to show all positions? It's just a little bit different. These are ones that are district wide. And so they get, again, they're not necessarily assigned to one individual school. They may be serving numerous places across the district. So you'll have some, some Gannett County wide or district wide positions. And here's a little hint in case, when you're looking at particularly like that page and it says seventy-one, one hundred. Again, if you go back to the summary, summary part of the PCR, it's broken down into major categories. So you can tie that to seventy-one, one hundred. And then those next numbers tie again to the PCR numbers. And you can see where they show up on that summary sheet. Does that make sense? Okay, so the one that you actually asked about that page, there are numbers going across above the titles. They tie back to those major categories listed on that summary sheet for the PCR.
So to give kind of the synopsis in the way I process it, the, the PCR that starts on page eleven and goes through page thirteen is a synopsis of the detail that goes through page thirty-five.
Thirty-five, that's right.
So Rachel, I guess help me with the, the net reduction of thirty-five. I, I see some, I, I gets the reclasses out for the, for the coaches. But it says ultimately on regular, especially teachers, just on page, at the top, that first line item on page eleven, due to staffing standards and enrollment, like we, we haven't, haven't really, are we changing, are we, we're not changing the staffing standards.
It's not changing the staffing standard. We're following the staffing standard based on our enrollment, which calls for then a reduction.
But I guess if we're, if we're reducing by point four percent, is that, I guess, are we seeing something this year? Where we're, where our, our current staffing is below the level just based on how everybody's split up amongst the teachers?
So we do not hire, again, we don't hire unless it's there. So the positions may have been in the PCR last year. But unless the enrollment was there, we do not hire that position. And so between the two years, yes, we're looking at total that we're seeing that the, the enrollment is down.
Okay. I mean, I know like one, a couple more, a couple more students at a, at a particular school might, might mean that we, so it's all how the, how the enrollment is spread among grade, grade bands.
Which is again, while we're saying this is a draft, this can, this is the draft because it will change. We have full confidence that there will be some things that are going to change in that. If there is, again, with open enrollment, fifty kids go to Brentwood High School, then their PCR is going to change related to that increase. And vice versa, if fifty kids left of school, same thing.
Well, and to, and to your point, the aggregate for fifty-two schools doesn't equal each individual school, right? Because we have to base it on individual schools, so.
Any more questions? Again, I know there are questions and they'll come back up. But are you ready to move on to the next? We're going to talk just briefly about revenues. So revenues, again, the three big buckets, sales tax, property tax, and TESA. For sales tax, I do not anticipate getting December sales tax the last week of February, which is a good indicator for me for the rest of the year. And so right now, I'm doing what I've done the last several years, which is just projecting a three percent increase. And so sales tax revenue would be a six point eight million dollar increase in revenue. Property tax, we've been told from the commission that they are going to have discussions in March. So present the property reappraisal information at that point in time. This is solely going to be on the commission and what they decide to do with the value of the allocation they give us. What we generally do is one percent when it's a non-appraisal year, increase by one percent. So that's what I've projected as of now. We'll see where we land there. TESA funding, we haven't been told what the new base is going to be. We haven't really been given any information as of yet. Again, last week of February, we're supposed to have a first estimate for that. So what I've done is made some assumptions. One, have gone ahead and added two hundred to the base. Mainly did that because the state's budget, what they had budgeted for the increase in TESA and the total number of students we had last year, and kind of backed into it and just said, good guess. And so that's where we are right now. It may be higher, it may be lower. We do know that the enrollment is down. So our average daily membership, which is our enrollment, plays into the TESA calculation. So I know that's down. And I also feel very confident that fiscal capacity is going to go up, which works against us as well. Reminder, fiscal capacity means we have the ability to pay, therefore we pay more. Our share is higher than other counties' share for the seventy, thirty split that we have with the state. So in making those assumptions, our total dra- draft, draft, draft budget revenue is five hundred million dollars. And that's that total at the bottom.
So if I may mention a couple things that this doesn't include. This does not include whatever decisions county government makes related to the property tax rate. Basically, and I'm oversimplifying, Rachel, about two thirds of our funding comes from the sales tax and property tax and about a third from TESA. Usually two to three percent from federal, but that's not part of this budget. And largely that, the federal money we get serves students with disabilities. So the, the biggest variable is we don't know that. A second variable on TESA is, like I mentioned earlier, day before yesterday, we, we heard from TSBA that projection of somewhere close to a three percent increase in the base amount. Now, we don't get all that from the base. The base is the state's projected share from the locals and the state. So we have included that in there, but things might change at the state level. Also, you guys may remember that when we had a conversation with our legislators a couple of weeks ago, Senator Johnson said that he was looking to try to find a way to offset the fiscal capacity. This projection does not include any funds from that because that, that hasn't been realized yet. Any other big ones I should mention, Rachel?
Those are the big pots. They really are. And if you guys, I didn't say that, want to turn to page thirty-seven in the book, that'll catch you up to where we're discussing the revenues and expenses for general purpose school fund.
So Rachel, based on, based on our estimate of, of how the appraisals are going to increase and what the estimates that we've already gotten and, and what happened last year with fiscal capacity at, you know, the three and a half million dollar hit. I, I mean, we're, any estimate of what that, and will, will it impact us for the, for this upcoming school year?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So what I did is went ahead and increased the fiscal capacity, assuming it's going to increase. It may increase more than what I've estimated. But with this projection, I did go ahead and take that into account. Tried to, based off of the fiscal capacity increases for the past two years. Based on what we've heard from the county commission so far, the property reassessment seems to be, it's going to be a really high reassessment. And so I feel like that that number, the fiscal capacity number could go even higher.
What was, what was the, what, what adjustment did you, did you estimate?
A point one percent increase, which sounds super tiny, but it's huge.
But what, what did that make, what, what did that do to us in terms of?
It's about a five million dollars difference.
Okay, that's lower than I thought, actually. But that's included here.
That's already been included. So if they don't, if it doesn't go that high, then that would be, you know, that would work in our favor.
We, well, TDOE is obligated to let the locals know by May what they are going to do with fiscal capacity. So that's one of the reasons we had that late hit, that two and a half million dollar, three and a half million, actually, reduction from what we had projected because that came a little bit late. And I expect we're going to get it again that late.
And kind of to your point, Mr. Robert, the, the two hundred dollar increase in the base did, you think, well, that should be able to cover it. And it didn't. That's why we're at a negative two million. Any other, on that, on that exciting news, any other questions you want to talk about revenue? Okay. We will move on and if y'all want to come back, just please feel free to speak up. What I wanted, the reason I said go ahead and turn to page thirty-seven. What you're seeing on the screen in front of you now is a reconciliation that gets us from where we were last year to the, what's listed in your binder is the current year revised. How did we get from our original to our current year revised? And again, this is just a reminder, these are the things that I come back with each month and ask you all to vote on. Of the money listed, all of it is grants, which we do not budget for because we're not guaranteed anything. Is it grants or it's carryovers from the prior year of grants and donations? The only item that we actually expensed this year, that's in addition to the original budget, that was from the funds that we had, we pulled for the bus purchase out of fund balance. And that's that bottom line, that one point four million. Everything else, like I said, is grants. But I wanted you to understand how we got from point A to point B so you could see it. Okay? Now we're going to talk about, and so this is where I'm going to tell you, we're going to go through this slide. I don't want you to ask questions just yet because we actually are going to go through and talk about each one of these lines. This is a summary of how we got from our original budget last year to the budget that's listed in this packet tonight. We are looking at operational increases of, well, I'm going to talk about that just a minute. Operational increases and then a lot, most of it, as you can see, is related to payroll. That bottom line, we'll also discuss of, of the reduction in the payroll lineups. So let's talk about operations. When we first met operational requests, and when I say met, that's the leadership team. It's the people you see sitting over here tonight. When we met, the requests were nine point six million over last year. Department directors, assistant superintendents met with each one of their groups and they went ahead and cut three point five million from that number. Then each group met with Mr. Golden and he's cut another seven hundred and fifty-five thousand out of it. So our final operational request over last year are five point four million dollars more. Of that, six point one is, is in technology. It's in Chromebooks. And reminder that last year, very similar, this was the same number. And we ended up having to cut that out of the budget because we couldn't, we did not have enough funds to, to fund it. And we ended up funding it through capital. And so we want to get this in the budget. It is a recurring item that is happening every year. So just idea, state talking to me, general purpose school fund are true operations. You can expect it. We know it's happening every year. Fund balance is really supposed to be able to fund those items that are extraordinary, that we didn't anticipate or a large purchase that is, is made not necessarily frequently. And so we really would like to get the Chromebooks in a rotation. IT department has the plan that if it gets into the general purpose budget, they have a ongoing revolving plan of how to replace so that it is a, instead of huge spikes in one year, you can pretty much count on this is what their technology replacement cost would be every year.
And if I may, I want to give you a little bit of a, of a peek at where we're headed. You may notice that Rachel included in her PowerPoint, replace the second through fifth grade devices. Our plan for this coming year is still in the works, but we do not intend to replace kindergarten and first. We did an analysis of, of kindergarten and first grade usage. And our, our plan at this point, based on that usage, I'm going to give you a little quick synopsis. We've, we've looked at a couple of weeks, two separate independent weeks of time, just, just this fall, related to usage. Kindergartners on average are using those devices between twenty-two and thirty-three minutes a day. Largely that is during instructional time where they are at stations, doing some, doing some, sometimes it's remediation work. Sometimes it's directed work towards, towards particular, towards particular skills. First grade, it varies between twenty-one and thirty-nine minutes per day. We don't think that it, it's the appropriate thing to buy devices for them. So right now, our plan is not to buy those devices, to take older devices and assign them at a, at a two to one or a three to one ratio at the, at the school level. Students will not take their devices home in kindergarten and first. On top of that, we are putting together a committee to evaluate screen time, student screen time, to, to make some longer term decisions and evaluations related to this. Dr. Allen, I know I just gave a tiny little synopsis because we're going to be working this over the, over the next few months. Any information you want to add to that?
Well, just the, the, the study on screen time, we, you all have brought it up. We've been listening. It's been on our minds for a long period of time. And so we feel now is the time to write, we, write to, to dig into that. We want to include some representation from the board, a representative from the board to be a part of that committee. And, and some community members and staff members to look at the research, to get our arms around what, what's actually happening. We do see a significant difference between active, what is called active and passive screen time. Active screen time, meaning students engaging the device for instructional purposes versus passive screen time, like maybe an indoor recess where they're, an indoor recess where they're playing games. And so maybe putting together through this committee, putting together some guidelines based on the research and based on what, what we feel is appropriate for our youth, to give to our teachers, to provide them some guidance. And so we're really excited about getting that work started. We're glad that Mr. Golden has pushed us in that direction to really to get a group together and take a look at it. And so we're excited about what, engaging with you and what we can bring back to you and what we can give to our teachers in terms of guidance.
And by the way, Dr. Allen mentioned that phrase indoor recess. We're still doing that physical recess. You're talking about additional time over and above, over and above the, the actual physical recess.
TCAP in elementary, are they still doing paper, pencil, or is it computers?
Paper, pencil, up through fifth grade. And it's, we don't have any indication that that's going to change, but it could.
Because one of the things I've been hearing from lots of parents is even going up to third grade to reduce the amount of screen. to reduce the amount of screen time, because they're like, they really are not happy with screen time. And I wondered how that might affect that number if we change that from like just fourth and fifth grade instead of leaving out, you know, K one.
Yeah, what, what, uh, we're, we're in the process of going through that. Third grade in that window of time, the average daily minutes have ranged between twenty-seven and fifty-six minutes. So there are some times for third grade that there are doing those interventions a little bit more deeply. Dr. Allen, also, the state screeners, let's, we talked about TCAP. And by the way, on TCAP, we, I get questions, and I know some of your team does, from time to time from the state. They continuously ask us, hey, what about doing the TCAP for the younger grades online? Historically, my experience is, by and large, the superintendents say no. And, and, and we keep on getting the question. Uh, you know, so that tells me that they, long-term, they continue to be thinking about it because they haven't put that question to bed, if that makes sense. Dr. Allen, let's talk about the screeners that lead to tiered interventions.
So, I think you captured, Mr. Gold, beginning in third grade, our screeners, which were required to, which were required to administer three times a year, are all online.
Yeah.
And so, but then also, when students would trigger additional supports, we actually monitor those students every other week through assessing them more frequently to monitor their progress, through progress monitoring. And so, they, they use those devices for that as well, beginning in third grade.
So, the state has two basic chunks of test. One is the screener that identifies which students need interventions on skills that are necessary to receive that grade level instruction. Those are the screeners we're talking about. At third through fifth grade, those are online. TCAP evaluates mastery of standards at the end of the year. Those are still on paper at the elementary level.
I was curious about, because we, I'm, I'm thankful that y'all took off kindergarten and first. What was the, what was the screen time usage compared in second grade?
Based on the data that we had, the, the range was between twenty-seven and forty-eight minutes.
Because I, I've spent a lot of time in the second grade and third grade classrooms, and I think it, it's fascinating to see how much they grow up in third grade.
Yeah.
But I, I would even say there's an argument to be made that, I don't think they need them in second grade because they're still working on the fine motor skills, learning how to write, writing sentences, you know. That's just my two cents. And I think, you know, third grade would be a, I would like at least third to be the youngest, my thoughts.
We'll have another discussion to revisit that, Dr. Allen.
I think we kind of started in the same place. And I think through the conversations, especially with second grade teachers, we start, we started to see a lot more significant use among them. And we had a lot of teacher feedback that they actually wanted to, to continue to use in second grade. But we, I think we kind of started in the same boat, thinking K through two, and we worked our way back to K through one, for what it's worth. And Andy is here as well, I don't know if, if, if Andy can add anything, and, and.
The only thing that I just wanted to add was that we do have Tennessee State Computer Science Standards that are K twelve, and so there are tiered standards that are taught, integrated into our core curriculum. And so, I think that's where we were most concerned and teachers were most concerned, is that, that the second graders didn't have their hands on the computer a little bit more often, that you would be pushing up some of those skills to third grade. And so, we know how important third grade is and just some of the other impacts with the third grade law and things like that, so.
I think that's a great point. I, I think I just, having them, taking them home with them every day, have may, maybe getting closer to a one-to-one ratio in the third, in the second grade classroom, and then maybe, I don't know, just, I mean, be, just my thoughts.
Thank you for that. We'll, again, we'll revisit that discussion, Dr. Allen.
And Mr. Gold, and I just want to make sure everyone knows Andy Davis. I think everybody does, but she's our Director of Instructional Technology, so.
Sorry, Rachel, I felt like I needed to mention that right there.
So, Jason, I guess, I'd love to see the screen time that you, that you got. If, like, even into high school, I'm really, I'm really interested in how much our student, and, and, and I know y'all can't, you probably don't measure the time that they're on it outside of, outside of school, as far as on the, the Chromebook even. But it's their, it's their portal into everything, and, I mean, I can't, I, I'm actually scared to, to look at it. It's funny, screen time used to be this thing that the, that the pediatrician would ask. And they, and it's like, we don't even, we don't even talk about it anymore because they know that they're on their screen for five or six hours at school, plus the five or six hours outside of school. And it used to be a, it used to be a thing that we, that we talked about. But since we got, since we got computers in the, in the classroom and at their, you know, taking home with them every day, we, it's something that we just, we just ignore, and I want to try to make sure that we highlight it and figure out how to, how to get them off of it as much as we can during the classroom, during the school day.
We'll, we'll talk to Andy. I, I do have some more data I can share with you, especially about K five that Andy worked on. We may have to have a conversation about how long it would take to gather up some data about the oldest grades. Because I know it, it includes some, some drill down and some assistance from, from tech companies, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, Andy?
Did you want me to respond to that? I can respond to that. So we use ClassLink, just like you guys start when you log into your WCS issued devices, you have the ClassLink dashboard. They have an analytics dashboard. Unfortunately, they don't have it where we can get real-time grade band data. It's something that they're working on. They're actually developing a new data warehouse that they're working in the background. So when we ask for data on grade bands, we have to reach out to them. They write scripts in the background, it takes them a couple of weeks to get that back to us. So we can pull some of that data, but again, because it's so much data, we have to take short windows of time, and then it wouldn't be something that we can monitor necessarily in real time.
But Jay, that's actually one of the things we were talking about that's going to be relevant to the committee evaluating screen time, for sure. And including weekends, right, for those who are taking it, taking those devices home. We have, another issue that we haven't touched on, I know, is that, that, that we've had some discussions on related to filtering. Has nothing to do with budget, but we do have some substantial filters that we're constantly working on. And I know you guys have had some questions from parents. Some of those websites, you have to be careful about what they have access to. YouTube's an example that we've been working on recently. Brian, I know that you all have, have worked on, on resetting some of the, some of the, this filter's not the appropriate word.
Actually, with, with YouTube, it's just their settings.
Settings, yeah, thank you. So that's a, that's a constant effort too, in addition to the screen time.
And Mr. Gold, I would add, the discussion about second grade and the one-to-one and taking them home, to Ms. Clement's question, there has been discussion of leaving them one-to-one and possibly not having them take them home. Now, that adds an additional cost, which would be carts, which we currently don't have.
Charging.
Charging carts, because if you're going to leave them at school, there has to be a way for them to be charged. So, it wouldn't be the, so there would be some additional costs with that if we went that route.
Sorry, Rachel.
A couple other things that I just don't want to, I think I kind of said it, but I want to go back to it. When I say that, that the operations originally, we, the directors cut three point five million, that is not an easy process. And so, when you really think about even technology, this is what brought it back up in my mind. All of our software, for the most part, every department has something that is driving. For me, and the finance department, our software is very expensive, and most of it has a built-in annual increase of three to five percent. And so, when we sat down this year, we were really looking at every line, was this effective, was it not? Could, should we use it, should we not, could we try something different? There are things, that, that nine million in requests over what we asked last year, we have needs. And it's just like we talked with capital, we have to prioritize and think, what can we, what, what's the bare minimum that we have to have? And it's hard, it is truly hard to look at people that are working, that need items that they know would enhance what they're doing and would help with what they're doing, and say, no, we can't afford it this year because we have other things that we prioritize, and most of the time, that's going to be our people. So those were hard decisions, those are hard, hard conversations to have and go through. And I don't want to just gloss over and say, oh yeah, we just cut, it was hard. So the fact that if we didn't have those computers in there, that we were already, would have been under where we were last year in operations is amazing, between inflation and, like I said, those built-in increases that just happen every year. And so, I, hard work was done, and I, and I really want to, I don't know, the pat on the back, but I want to point that out, that, that it was done. We are taking, we are getting feedback, we hear what you're saying, and we're trying to be mindful of the resources and using them to the best of our ability.
Well, and, and I want to, I want to speak specifically to Dr. Allen and Dr. Royer and Dr. Webb. And really, those are the, those are those three assistant superintendents who, who lead our mission, which is to educate our children, keep, keep children safe and educate them. And they've had, they've, they've, they brought a list of things that they had already culled down. We've had the discussion about, one of my phrases that I often mention, success is tenuous. We know we have limited supplies, we know we're government, we know that, that, that tax money is and should be very tight. And so, it, those are very difficult conversations as I, I basically put them in a position of having to grow our students without, sometimes without the, with, without the resources that they have determined are our best way to do that. So, I think it is important for us to mention that, that we have not said yes to, to everything. Not said yes to some things that Rachel described as needs, be, because of, because of where we are. So it's, it's that difficult balance, knowing that ultimately, right now, our, our draft expenses exceed our projected revenues. So, I may at some point share some details of those specific positions that they've, that they've asked for that, that are not included in this budget because we just determined, we, we, we just can't project out that we're going to get the funding for.
Okay. We're going to go on again, that was that first operations. The next several lines, Vicky Hall is going to go over with you, so I'm going to turn it over to her. And then I'll come back at the very end for the last, those payroll line reductions.
Thank you, Rachel. So, we started out, when we were looking for the pay charts this year, looking to see what we could do. We started with the goal that the board presented to Mr. Golden, which was to propose a pay increase within available funding that focuses on improving competitive pay for all positions with a focus on supplements and hard-to-fill positions. So we kind of started trying to meet that goal and, and took that and went on the next steps with that. So, what that led to for us was that we would propose or recommend a two percent increase on all of the pay charts. That would at least provide some measure of improvement for all positions and, you know, maintain our competitiveness within the market. Which, I look at our market, you know, with teachers primarily, is other local districts that are near us that we all kind of compete for the same candidates. There's, you know, different wider markets when it comes to some of the classified positions, but largely, we do compete a lot with other LEAs.
And Vicky, if I may, I want to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I want to mention two things. Number one, these proposals that she's talking about are proposals that, that are, that are, number one, based on the description we had, we, we have in my goal of available funds. These funds are not available yet. This is based on what county government has talked about potentially funding us, the four, four percent. So that, what we're talking about is using what they may give us for a proposal. Second big piece, we have an obligation, and frankly, a joy sometimes, and I'm not being sarcastic, a joy of having conversations with the Williamson County Education Association, the WCA through PECA. We have an obligation to propose this to them as well. So this is a precursor to those meetings. So I felt like it was important for me to mention those two things.
So, starting with teachers, like two percent on the teacher chart will offer teachers about a four percent increase per step because they have an automatic roll. So every year, they move up at least about two percent as it is. So with the roll and the two percent, teachers would receive about a, a four percent. That bottom line there where the teacher step, twenty-one, will go up approximately twelve percent. That is because we stop our pay chart at line twenty-one. A lot of districts go to line twenty-five. So our theory was a few years ago, let's go ahead and give the teachers that money now at line, what they would be making at line twenty-five. So that's how we arrive at that number. We think it's a retention tool and potentially a recruiting tool because when we hire teachers in, like from out of state, that's where we start them, is at that line. So, knowing that teachers are, you know, making choices to retire, you know, if you're at year sixteen and you think, I could go ahead and retire and do something else, if you kind of offer that incentive of that big increase at year twenty-one, we get the value of that experienced teacher staying with us. They go ahead and get that increase, and additionally, it, that helps their retirement. So we're hoping that that is an incentive for them to stay with us a little bit longer. And as long as we're talking about teachers, I do want to just, you know, there's, there's lots of positions that need attention. But teachers continue to be our biggest struggle, especially those special education teachers. But the pool is streak, is shrinking, and we just have, they're a limited number, and they are very specific. We've got to find licensed teachers, they have to be endorsed in the appropriate area, and our local universities, which, you know, we get, we get teacher candidates from all across the United States. We really do, we recruit out there and we bring some in. But largely, still, we get a lot from our local universities. This year, they are probably, there will be well below two hundred teacher candidates that graduate in the spring from combining MTSU, Vanderbilt, Belmont, Lipscomb, Tennessee Tech. That used to be MTSU alone. So, we're, we're still in that, in that predicament of really, you know, we're all kind of scrambling for the same teachers.
So our market analysis i- is concluded that, and you're going to get some more data from, from Vicky in just a little bit, our teachers are our biggest challenge in the market because we are competing with our neighbors for teachers. So that's, that's really the core of, of, of this discussion.
They are. So, we, this year, we've, are proposing that we increase that entry level pay by two percent because, you know, we can't really move it up any higher because that affects the rest of the chart, which is extremely expensive. So, the recommendation is to make the starting pay at fifty-one thousand, one oh two. Where we'll need to spend some emphasis, I think, coming up in, in the coming years is on in kind of the earlier to mid-years of that chart. We start out very well with our, I'm going to call them competitors, and primarily, in my experience, it's Metro and Rutherford County. Sometimes Murray County, it just depends. But we, we do start out pretty strong, but then we, we fade off. By, by year five, Rutherford County is, is outpaying us. And if you think about teachers who, especially if they come from a traditional pathway, they graduate, they work here for a few years, they're ready to buy a house, they can't afford it here, so they can make more in Murfreesboro and buy a house. So we're kind of, we're fighting of, you know, a challenging battle. Of course, we are a great place to work, so I'm going to say that. But it's, we, that's, that's why we have to strive for that. We do offer a lot of support for our teachers, and we get lots of feedback about that too, that they do feel very supported. So, just wanted to, just kind of let you know that, that we're still in that, in that struggle to find those teachers.
Is, is there room in the budget for any incentives, like financial incentives? Like five thousand per teacher to, if they stay on board for five years, or any packages like that? I haven't heard anything.
So one thing I'll, I'll mention is retention bonus that we're going to increase. So one thing I'll, I'll mention is retention bonus, um, that we're going to increase, uh, proposing to increase this year. What we have done is we've offered, um, for hard to fill positions, we have offered a early signing bonus of six thousand dollars. We don't have very many of those, we have about fifty. But they're, they're been an excellent tool. In fact, some have already gone out for next year, some student teachers we had. Um, so they're a really good tool. We pay them that when they, when they come to work for us, when they sign their contract and show up to work. Um, that helps them with like moving expenses and things like that. So we have done that. Um, our retention bonus is something I'd like to work on more, but, um, we do, we do have some. And I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit, because I'm going to, um, propose to, to, that we, um, increase that a little bit. So on the classified chart, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Well, I was just actually getting ready to ask for clarification about those pay charts. Can you tell us what those four are? Like, I know teacher, but yeah, it sounds like you were going the right direction.
Oh, well, I, I was, I was just going to go to the classified chart. Um, so with the, on the classified chart, uh, again, the, uh, there's an application of that two percent increase across the board. The classified chart rolls differently than the teacher chart. It rolls in five-year increments. There's a starting pay, and then you go to band one through five, and it rolls every five years. So that roll is three to nine percent roughly. Um, and so those individuals would see that increase as well, plus the, the two percent that is going to go on the chart. Did that answer your, your question, Margie, or?
And I, I guess my question is, is this basically all staff is getting a two percent raise? Even everyone at central office, even everyone that makes a hundred and seventy-four thousand, a hundred-plus thousand, they're all getting a two percent raise?
The, the, the proposal is for all employees to get a two percent increase.
The proposal is that teachers get, in essence, four percent, double what the others get. Um, some classified folks, because of the way we structured it, will, will, will receive a subs, uh, uh, some more substantial pay increase. Um, and those, uh, off that chart will get a two percent. So, yes, the proposal is for everyone to get a minimum two percent. Uh, Vicky has some more details related to some other additional pay for, for some others, other than the, other than principals and, and, and specialist and, uh, and, uh, leadership staff. Go ahead.
Okay, so I, we can, if Rachel, if you'll move me on, we can talk about supplements, because I know that's been a priority. Um, so we, um, after we've had a lot of discussions about supplements, um, we started a group of, like a focus group of athletic, uh, employees and also some of our staff from fine arts. Um, we enlisted Mark Kinzer and Darren Joins to come in and join us with that. And so we've spent, uh, pretty much a year or more looking at supplements across our, um, across the districts, across the state, primarily our, our competition. And we took the feedback from the group, and they gave us their recommendations. We, we met in person a couple of times, and then they also gave us a, uh, feedback on a spreadsheet where we were able to kind of go through and analyze it. So we have taken the recommendations, we also did an internal market study, and this is basically what we came up with. Um, for fine arts, we were actually paying very well in all the categories except for middle school band director. So on the, on the chart, hopefully y'all can see it pretty well. Williamson currently is in, on the left side there in dark blue. And our, the proposal is in that purpley color that's on the right side. And then Rutherford, Wilson, Murray, and MNPS are in, uh, the middle. So we did make some improvements there, and we've shared this with that group. And obviously, there's things some different people would like to see, but I think that the group was in consensus that this was a really good improvement here, and that we are moving in the right direction. Another thing, though, I do, I want to mention, I forgot to tell y'all this. A big concern from the fine arts staff was that we were paying them a flat rate instead of a percentage rate. So we have now moved all of fine arts onto a percentage rate.
And that's, if I may, that's actually the document that's in the pocket of, uh, of your notebook that was passed out.
Oh, sorry about that, I forgot to tell you that. That's what, previously, we had just given like a flat sum of like twelve, one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for a particular position. Now we have structured that so that it's a percentage of where they are on the teacher chart. And you do have those charts in your pocket.
So Rachel, um, we've had a couple of items related to pay. I'm wondering about the aggregate funding for each of those. Is that, we're going to get there, okay.
Okay. So we also reviewed athletics, and you can see that we've got the same thing going here on this chart. The athletics, we actually trailed in a few positions, um, and we've tried to make some corrections on that. Um, one thing we kept in mind, though, was trying to keep some internal equity. Internal equity between athletics and in the fine arts. So that nobody's, you know, way outperforming or way out earning somebody else, uh, basing that on hours and, um, that type of thing. So we do, I'll give y'all time, I know, to look at it, because you've, you've had questions about it over, over time.
And by the way, we're actually going to provide this, this, um, slide deck as well. We're going to post this, so you'll be able to find the slide deck and study it.
Okay. And while we were at it, we went ahead and looked at academic supplements. Those, the academic supplements were, um, there, there, we found a lot of districts didn't offer academic supplements, but, um, some did. But we did make an adjustment of about four percent to all of these categories. This is just a sample, um, your, the whole, uh, chart is in your packet. But just to put it up here, we went, our lowest end, six seventy-five to seven hundred.
This was what Mr. Golden was just asking. So the cost for eat, making these adjustments, adjustments to the academics was two hundred and forty-three thousand. Fine arts is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then athletics is five hundred and sixty thousand. What is listed out beside that is how many we paid last year, how many of these supplements we paid. And it says FTEs, that means, um, thank you, full-time equivalency, I got the full-time, I was like, what's my, full-time equivalency? Meaning, I could have someone getting paid a supplement, um, Vicky and I could split. She does the spring and I do the fall. And so she gets a point five and I get a point five. So full-time, one-point-oh positions all added together. So as you can see, um, academics, there's tons of those, um, and then athletics, and then fine arts is the smaller group.
You all, I may be jumping the gun. Oh, sorry, I am jumping the gun, you've already hit it, sorry.
You read our mind. Okay, so we were mentioning, um, about the additional incentive recommendations. So the hard to fill positions are something we do feel like we need to address for those, uh, staff in those positions who are already with us. Currently, they receive a six hundred dollar, uh, retention bonus. We are proposing to increase that to twelve hundred, to try to address, uh, or attempt to begin to address that issue. And then also with the, um, non-twelve-month classified staff, um, the proposal would be to give them two additional paid holidays. The plan that we have considered is paying them that during spring break, because a lot of times they ha, they do have to go that whole week without pay. So, um, we do believe that would be an incentive for them to stay as well.
So if I may, related to that, if I'm not mistaken, has it been three years that we increased the ten-month classified pay by five pay days? Uh, it was it?
During Christmas, during the winter holiday.
So, so three years ago, we added five holiday full-paid days. We put them in the, in between Christmas and New Year. Um, so this proposal includes, uh, adding two paid full days at the spring break period. And Rachel, that, that may be the next slide, the way I'm going tonight, but, um, what's the, what's the cost on, on a day for the classified ten and eleven-month employees?
It's about two hundred and sixty, because it was, well, four hundred and thirty is what the total cost, four hundred and thirty-five for the two days.
Four hundred and thirty thousand dollars to add those two days. And the, the proposed increases to the supplements, we project it's going to be somewhere between one-point-one and one-point-two million. Just, I, I just want to make sure I had those numbers articulated.
So the last line, when we were looking at the total budget, had the personnel cost reduction. And again, um, the PCR is going to show a net change of thirty-five point six. Forty-one point nine-five reduction, um, related to staffing standards and enrollment. The rest, um, we did have some additions, and you can go through and see what that are, what those are. Uh, again, a lot of it related to staffing standards, uh, and increased enrollment. We did have some, a couple of schools that had an increase. We, the number looks huge. Half of that are those, are those reductions that you're seeing for teachers. The other half is, is cumulative over several things, and that includes, we looked at actual, we have dug in as, as far as we can go at this point in actual lines, and looked at the cost versus what we estimated to fill those positions. What that means is, when we have unfilled positions, or when we add positions into the PCR, we generally take an average of what the pay is for whatever that job class is. And so sometimes it comes in higher than the average, sometimes it comes in lower. So we're actually looking at who has been hired into those positions now, and can reduce, uh, some of those lines, because they are below what that average is. We also looked at the tax lines, which is social security and Medicare. Those, um, when we put them in, when we're estimating, we're assuming it's full, uh, taxes on the gross pay. But we have HSAs, we have medical expenses that come out that can be pre-tax contributions to 401Ks. And so we've looked at that, um, and can say, okay, well, the actual social security and Medicare is lower than the full amount on the gross pay, so we've reduced that. Um, and then we've also taken, the PCR shows full-time positions for classified, and a hundred percent of the professional side is shown in the PCR. But there were some part-time positions that have gone unfilled, that were on the classified side, and so we've gone ahead and reduced those out as well. So we're looking, trying to figure out where all our, every penny we can get, we're trying to figure out where we can pull that from. And so the net reduction at this point in time in personnel costs is the six point three million.
If I may, on the pay side, before we, we, we go to the next, uh, uh, item that Rachel's mentioning, just as a reminder, the governor, through his proposal related to ESAs or vouchers, uh, included a two thousand dollar, one-time bonus for, for teachers. I've sent that, sent an email with some detail to you all. We, we still don't know the net result of that. Um, but it, the way it's designed is those teachers who are teaching, who are actually doing classroom teaching more than fifty percent of the time. For example, that would not include coaches, as I read it. Uh, and so, so what we are proposing has nothing to do with that, with that fund from the governor. Um, there are some variables we still don't know. For example, we don't know, will we have a responsibility to pay the employer's portion of Medicare and social security? Uh, Rachel, it's estimated, based on our number of teachers, classroom teachers, that's somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars. So we've got to figure out from the state what their expectations are for that. Are they giving us the two thousand, and they, and all those withholdings get taken out of the two thousand? Or is the employer going to have to contribute to it, right? So.
I mean, at the, the meeting on Tuesday, they said they were trying to cover all that.
Yeah.
So, we need to hold them to that.
That, yeah, that's right. So, yeah, they're, they're still working, they're still working on that. So just wanted you guys to be aware that this, that what Vicky has proposed has nothing to do with that two thousand. Sorry, go ahead, Rachel.
So when, again, when we come to the table, I thought, I just wanted to share this information with you two. There were two point two million dollars worth of requests to adjust pay or just pay lines, where advocate that, um, it could be this particular position, this job class, we know is getting harder to fill, and it needs an adjustment. There were those requests. There were also five point two million in new requests, meaning we feel like if we had this, this person, it would benefit our staff in this way. Those, um, again, are those hard conversations. If, when you listen to the, I won't say an argument, but the presentation on each one of those, they make total sense, and you can understand why the need is there. What we have come to you with is adding, truly adding one position, which is the innovation hub, the CTE innovation hub, because we're going to have to have someone leading that. And then there's two classified, um, paid days for the classified, ten and eleven-month classified. So that's what we've asked you for, what we're asking you for as of right now. But there's seven million dollars worth of requests that didn't make it into this document yet. And I say yet, if we had, you know, this great influx of money, there would be things that we would come back and add. But again, trying to be mindful of, of the bottom line, and what we feel like, um, is a reasonable ask. So this particular slide I'm putting up here to show you, the trend that we have seen, our revenues and expenses over the last several years. And as you can see, the gap is getting bigger and bigger. Um, and so we have been able to present budgets and balance them by using what is fun, we call fund balance. And think of it in this way, fund balance is your savings account, and revenues and expenses are kind of in your checking account. So you've got money coming in, money going out. And if my revenue is not as high as my expense, then I can use fund balance to come in and cover the difference. The issue, well, two things to remember, is we only budget ninety-two percent of property taxes, and that's a requirement, um, from the county for us. And so we know that there's always going to be more revenue than what's listed here, this is what was budgeted, but we're going to have more revenue in property tax, um, and that goes into fund balance. The issue is, if you don't have more money going into fund balance, eventually your savings account runs out. And so the gap is getting bigger and bigger. Um, and I just wanted you to be able to see that, that last year, when we came and we asked for, uh, we're told a six percent raise, asked for the six percent raise, that was a county, um, directive. The money was not there, we knew we didn't have the money. Same thing when we came, um, last year at the same time, we knew we, the money, the revenue was not there. Um, we're doing it, this again. And that, but I wanted you to get a visual of what it looks like, that the revenues and expenses are not.
And some of you who've been on the board for a number of years, um, will recall, in more recent years, uh, the county commission has in essence said, pay out of your fund balance rather than the tax rate. Uh, and so that's what we've done. Uh, last year with the pay increase, we in essence paid it out of our fund balance. They forgave a million dollars on the energy savings program. Uh, so there's a little bit that they gave, but largely, that, it came out of, out of, uh, out of fund balance. Um, another piece was, uh, we, they, um, we moved some, some of our purchases to capital. Um, but again, largely, it came out of our fund balance. So we have tightened that up this year. Uh, we are at a stage that, based on our fund balance, we have in essence paid for this year with fund balance, or our savings, and we can't do it again next year. Based on our current projections of revenues.
Correct. And revit, again, I want to say, we get more in revenue than we budget at times. Um, and we may, well, through donations, through different things that come in, um, revenue will go up again, property tax because of it, these are budgeted. Expenses, we don't, we're not going to necessarily spend every penny with positions that are open. And when I say open, that doesn't mean that they're unfilled all year, but there are times people retire and you have gaps, uh, of service. And so there's going to be money left over in the pot. So there's money going into fund balance, but it is not a consistent, I can't tell you, we're going to have X amount of dollars every year going into fund balance. So again, just want to keep you this, in that in mind when we go to page thirty-seven in your binder. So what you're looking at then is the numbers you've already seen, what we're projecting for revenue, and what we were projecting at the moment for expenses. Over on the left side is a summary of that, projected revenue. That estimated fund balance is what, as of February eleventh, that is what our projected fund balance is for this coming year. So forty-eight million, when the year ends, we're projecting, we're going to have forty-eight million. So total resources we have available to be able to, to balance our budget is five hundred and forty-nine million. Our expenses are at five hundred and sixty-four million. We have a requirement that we also have to keep three percent of fund balance, we cannot spend every penny of it. We have to keep a minimum of that in our quote-unquote savings account. So our total expenses in that three percent fund balance is five hundred and eighty. Again, our total revenue was five forty-one. So what I'm coming to you right now with is a gap for this budget of thirty-one million dollars. When we presented the budget in, well, we kinda talked about the budget, if y'all remember, we, everybody had a heart attack in February last year, it was sixty million dollars. And then we got different information, um, from the county, different guidance on medical insurance was the huge thing there. When we presented the budget last year in March, that gap was twenty-five million. And so currently, right now, as of today, this number's gonna change between now and March. Again, why we hate putting this information out so early, 'cause it can change drastically. It has changed in the last week with every little piece of information we get. We posted a payroll today, with posting that payroll, we're gonna take that data, and we'll be able to hone in even further on numbers. And so while this is a sticker shock at the moment, am I gonna cover thirty-one million? No way. Am I gonna get that number down? Sure, to some degree. Um, so I just wanted you to understand what that really looks like, and wh- when we're showing you this budget right now, that would be, if we presented it today, this would be where it'll stand, this would be the gap of thirty-one million. Does anybody wanna say anything about that?
Got a question?
Sure.
What was our, what was our fund balance that we actually took into this budget year?
Into this one? Uh, right, it's seventy, so when you look at the audited financial statements, it's gonna show eighty. Um, so it was about six, well, I'll say seventy, it was sixty-seven, if I'm remembering correctly. But part of that, there's a fifteen million dollar grant that we got for that CTE innovation hub that shows up, because it flowed through one forty-one, but we don't really count it, because it's tied up.
So, without, without, the, with, taking that fifteen out, we had sixty-seven. So, I just wanted to, I just wanna point out, so, so basically, I know this isn't our final fund balance, we probably showed something less than that at this time last year. And you're gonna, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna cut off, cut off purchasing for essential stuff only, and we, and, and we get all the, um, you take all the, uh, unfilled positions and all that kinda stuff, but then we can't overpay anything, and so we have to underpay all of our line items, so I get all that. But, but at the end of the day, the, we're gonna be taking likely less from fund, eh, less of, a s- a lower fund balance this year than we did last year.
There will be less fund balance available.
And it's because we had to fund stuff out of our fund balance that should've been funded out of, out of operating, were it not for the budget shortfall.
That's right, of, of approximately nineteen million.
Right. And so we'll, we'll, we'll narrow, we'll narrow that gap a little bit. But in addition to our four percent raise, that we're, we're just, we're starting out at a, in a bigger hole, and off of a, off of a bigger number, the, this year, um, you know, our, our expenses are going up, and, and our fund balance that's used to fund it is going down. Um, and our three percent, you know, obviously is going up, but.
It's up, 'cause it's tied to the.
I mean, that, this is, it's just, it's the, it's the cumulative impact of kicking the can down the road.
That's right.
Um, in addition to all of our, our capital that doesn't go away, just because we fund less than our, than our requests, year after year after year, so.
That's right.
Um, a quick question on instructional support, there's a little over ten point three million dollar increase.
I can, yes, that specifically is one of the things that I was saying, that the state came out with a new line. They said all coaches have to be moved down, they cannot be in the teacher line anymore, so they're all getting moved.
Oh, that's, okay, okay.
Into that, into that major category.
Gotcha.
So, for example, special education instruction went down a little bit, uh, um.
So that's your coaches, gotcha.
So what I want you to do too, the front page there, and what you're seeing on the screen, this is a summary of each of the major categories. And you can see, um, where we ended actual numbers, and then current year, our current year information and what we're projecting. What you then have behind that is the detail for every one of these major categories, um, broken down further. And so what, when you flip through those pages, the first page is gonna be revenue, and then the rest are the major categories. There's a percentage out to the right that's gonna show the change in that account. Um, and I've, anything that was big to me, or stood out to me, I went ahead and put you a note as to why that changed. And so you'll actually find that reference in there, that we've moved the instructional coaches to that line. And so you'll see, um, they make sense to me, they may not make sense to you. So when you read a note and you go, I have no idea what she's saying, ask me what I'm saying, and I'll gladly, um, clarify. But I do this just for me as well, so that I understand what, what we're moving.
The ten million are instructional coaches, not like athletic coaches?
I mean, it could be a number thing.
Oh, okay.
It could be several things, but that's a big.
And you'll have the notes in here?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes. And again, just fair warning, if you see it's a hundred percent increase, and you go, she didn't write anything, if it was fifty and it went up to a hundred, I didn't, 'cause that's an insignificant amount. If it went from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, I'm gonna have, should have some little notation out there. You're gonna see a ton of reductions in that first section of teachers, because social security, Medicare, pension, all that, when you remove those positions, they all go down. Um, so just keep that in mind as you go through. But what I want you to do is, yeah, go through, look at each section, and then as you have those questions, what's in this line, or what made that up, or why did you make that decision to do that? That's what we're here for, is, is to ask those things. And again, that's gonna take you time to go through. I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, what, general purpose school fund is on pages thirty-nine through fifty-four. And so you have, you have several pages there, um, to look through. And I know you're just getting this right this second, but, you know, if you have something that immediately you wanna know, um, feel free to ask. If not, we can move on, and you ask your questions, um, later, as you've had time to look.
And I do wanna mention, in, in our current year's budget, eighty-six percent is people. Some version of people, health insurance, salaries, benefits, et cetera. Um, so that's, that's where the bulk of our money is spent. We are in the people business.
Are y'all okay with me going on, or do you want a minute? We're good, I'm gonna go ahead. You do, and you have my telephone number, so please, seriously, feel free to call me. I know some people have already asked if they could, you know, come in and have a one-on-one with me, and that's great, I'm glad to do that at any time. Um, all you gotta do is ask. Okay, so the next section, um, that we'll look at is central cafeteria, it starts on page fifty-six. Central cafeteria and extended school care is just a reminder, they are self, self-sufficient in that they generate their own revenues and expenses, and we do not, um, cover those through the tax dollars.
So let me put some detail on that. No local tax dollars are spent on our central cafeteria. It is funded by some federal revenue and, um, actual users, actual customers.
Correct. And so what you're seeing again there is projected revenue and projected expenses, um, and they've got a fund balance, uh, listed down at the bottom. They have plenty of fund balance, um, to be able to balance their budget again. As everything else we've said, as we hone in, the numbers will change a little bit, but, um, they're, they are in good shape. There's no, um, request at this time to increase fees. I know some of you have asked the question, you know, what is, will there be effect by the USDA? And we don't, we're not aware of anything, um, at this time. If there was something that changes, then we'll come back to you and let you know what that would be. No questions on that one. We'll move on to the extended school care program, which is our before and after school care. Um, and again, revenues and expenses, projected fund balances as of, that one I ran on February the fifth. So they do not have a gap either, they are in, um, good shape to be able to cover their costs.
And are these put back in our budget, or what happens?
No, they are totally self, self-funded, so they stay in their own. So as their year closes out, it goes into their own fund balance, so that they start the next year with that money.
And Rachel, if I'm not mistaken, we are actually prohibited from taking those funds to the general budget.
That is correct. That is correct, we cannot co-mingle the, any of the separate funds.
And this fund is dr- driven by, uh, by the, 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 uh, the customer cost for those, for the users. And I will say, it's limited based on demand and our ability to staff. So there, there are occasionally wait lists, uh, at particular locations, depending on our ability to staff.
I think they were able, really, they worked hard this year to work through that, um, to try to get, that they took everybody off the waitlist so that they could serve.
Our staffing is better than it has been in previous years.
Correct. Any questions on that one? All right, so the last section then, um, is our annual capital, it starts on page sixty-five. We've talked to you, I know, uh, Mr. King last month did a presentation for you on annual capital. And so what you see is that first summary, um, don't get confused, I confuse everybody. The far right column is what is the current year, I just put up last year's information, so you have it to compare to. Um, last year, our commission did fund fully thirteen point one million, we're asking for the fourteen that you see, uh, listed. And then behind that is the detail, where you will actually see the schools where things are being requested. Again, like everything we do, um, tons of, tons and tons and tons of requests come in, um, as we go around and talk to our principals and see what, um, their biggest needs are. And then priority, prioritization occurs, and this is what we brought to you, um. There was actually about seventy million dollars in capital requests this year, and we were asking for fourteen, um, because we feel like that that was what the commission had the appetite to be able to approve.
And what we knew could keep the building safe.
Correct.
Uh, and in, and in working order. Couple of things related to this, uh, especially those of you who are new to the board, you may notice at the very bottom, those highlighted areas, we talked about general and rural. Uh, this is something that people really struggle getting their arms around. Because Franklin Special School District exists, we have to differentiate our capital projects between general and rural. General is high school projects, rural are K-eight, because Franklin Special is a K-eight program. When we do a rural capital improvement, the county has to fund a proportionate amount of capital to Franklin Special. So right now, we are ninety-two percent, well, uh, we're not, somewhere around there. Franklin Special's about eight percent of our size.
Can you say that one more time?
It's tough, right?
You got my attention with that, but.
So, so every time we do a capital project at our elementary and middle schools, when the county commission funds it, they have an obligation to fund a proportionate amount directly to Franklin Special School District for their capital.
But Franklin, the city of Franklin doesn't do that.
Correct. Franklin Special, that's the, that's the nature of special school districts, because they still get, uh, county funding.
Does it work the reverse way? Does, do we ever get anything?
No. Good question. No. And right.
But we get their students.
Well, at the high school level, we get their students, and so when you see a general, from a county commission perspective, that's actually how much they're, they're going to need to spend. But when you see a rural, you're basically gonna have to add eight or nine percent to that for how much they have to spend. And then Franklin Special gets that portion directly.
But there's some, anyway, this is off topic, but I was just thinking how they have expanded the city limits, but not their district.
Well, thank you for that.
And that's a state issue.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. For, um, um, the Franklin Special District, the lines for all special districts across the, the state were frozen somewhere around nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty-two. And so, yes, the city limits expand, growth occurs within those city limits, but Franklin Special is still limited to where they were.
Again, you guys are gonna have questions, I know you are. I want you to ask them, that is what my job is, is to be able to help you. Um, don't leave something on the table where you're wondering, the wondering is where, I, I just wanna be able to shoot you straight and tell you what it is. So again, ask the questions. You've got, um, I, I put in the memo in the front, February twenty-eighth, um, is a couple of weeks from now. I'm really asking y'all, look at this, let's talk about it between now and then. We have a next work session that's gonna be March sixth, we're a little off because of spring break, so it's coming up, it'll be here faster. When we come on March, um, the March sixth work session, um, I wanna have questions for, I mean, I want you to be able to have answered your questions, if at all possible. It just makes it easier, y'all see how big this is, and you're looking at it? I don't have every answer for you, we do have to do some research, um, you know, at times. And so ask those questions ahead of time, it just means that you're gonna get truly accurate information, um, that we can get back to you. And so, March the sixth, again, that work session, we're gonna bring the budget to you. The other request I have is, we've sat down tonight and talked through, I want y'all to tell me what you want in that March sixth work session. I don't necessarily wanna do this whole thing again, because you'll have had time to get your, your, your mind wrapped around it. Again, we're gonna make those adjustments, you'll get the document ahead of the work session, so that you do have time to look at the updated document before you come in to the work session. And then that would be the budget we actually propose. I cannot stress it enough, this is the draft, there's a lot of work to be done between now and then.
And I'm gonna add, I want your feedback. Uh, you've seen the proposal, we've got some time, um, maybe more time than we've had in the past to process through it. Uh, we're gonna be speaking with the WCA about pay, but I want your feedback on those issues as well. And you've given us some good feedback already, we're gonna do a little bit of work on, but certainly in the next few weeks, um, add your feedback on, on your thoughts on this.
Did you say when the ETA was for the, like, the more formalized, did we, did you give us a? I really wanna get through the end of February, because there's so many things, that last week of February, we should get a T assessment, I should get the sales tax. So I'm. Few days before the work session?
Yeah.
So it'll be a few days before the work session.
It should, it should be close to a week before the work session.
But I really wanted to try to get those numbers in to have a better idea.
So I'm, on page sixty-six, um, you know, the computers, four point seven million. And then you said we also took money from fund balance to pay for computers too? Or was this what you were talking about was used to pay for computers last year?
So that, that's gonna include that, well, it didn't include that number. The computers here, I think, a lot, some of it is, is gonna be teacher computers, it's gonna be the work computers, it's gonna be, yes.
So annual capital, it, it's another one of those coding things that says computers. It's, it's really not computers. It's technology equipment for the classroom, that kinda lasts longer. A lot of it's like the interactive boards and, and things like that, it'll be printers.
Yeah, that's a better description.
Yep.
Yeah, but for some reason, it's listed.
I'm gonna give you a silly, I'm gonna give you a silly example, the state has gasoline, but we buy diesel fuel, right? So there's lots of examples where sometimes the description's not excellent. So I'll, yeah, feel free to ask those questions too. And on the capital, we do have detail. Uh, so the, the, the attached document, uh, might give you some additional detail. We try to specify particular school locations as well, uh, in that, in that capital detail. I will tell you, we get more questions from county commissioners about particular locations of schools. Is that a good descri- is that fair description?
Absolutely, they wanna know if it's, it's affecting their, their district.
Yeah, they ask, they ask questions about.
You won't see locations for technology as much, because that's district-wide. It's just things we, printers and stuff that we buy district-wide, but on the maintenance side, you will see specific locations.
I have one thing I wanna ask, and you're gonna be like, okay. If you would bring your binder back, the binder's for you to take if you wanna take it with you this time, but bring it back, because we're gonna change out, and we're gonna say, here's your real budget. Um, but I didn't want you to have to keep up with two, two binders.
So one, one little, one little, uh, uh, practice tip that I learned with, uh, with these budgets, especially at this early stage. When you're jotting down notes on a particular document, Rachel's gonna give you a new one. Uh, so.
He loves nothing more than to come in every morning, and I'm like, here's your new one.
Here's your new one, it's changing every day right now. So if you've got particular notes you wanna jot down, my, my recommendation is jot them on maybe a little notepad on the side that you can transfer to the new one when she gives it to you. Oh, too late, Dan says that's too late. Mr. Chair?
Okay.
If I may, uh, thank you for, I mean, for the, the updates throughout the, the process. You know, we, we started early as, and looking at the, at the process and for, um, the preliminary, even though, I know you hate giving out preliminary numbers, even, um, even before the, the budget proposal, but it's really, it's really helpful, um, for, um, we're not, not that you weren't transparent before, but I mean, this is just, this is really, the sooner we can get it, especially with sixty board members, the, the better. So it, it ultimately makes your job easier, I know that's why you're doing it, but.
Thank you for that. Um, but there are so many things we as, we know, we assume, I mean, you know, 'cause it's our day in, day out. And so you guys asking the questions, I mean, I may have a question, but it's not gonna be the same questions you ask. And so glad, I'm actually, it's been helpful, I think, for all of us to really get a big picture of, of what you're coming to the table with, and the, and the perceptions, and the, and the views you have, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. We, we do know it's a moving target every year.
That it is, I can't, I told, I told Mr. Gold, I'm like, I'm gonna say it a hundred times.
Right, right.
This is a draft, this is not it.
Well, it's funny, Mr. Cash and I had that discussion, he said, yeah, we never find out till, till it's, till it's too late, something to that effect.
So thank you.
Thank y'all, and again, you're right, Dr. Johnson, we have, you have my email address and got a phone number, give me a call. Thank y'all, and again, you're right, Dr. Johnson, we have, you have my email address and got a phone number, give me a call. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, all right. Uh, operations report, Brian King.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, some brief updates on a few, just a few of our projects we have going on in operations. Um, the access control for all exterior doors is now a hundred percent complete as of, I believe, about a week and a half, two weeks ago. Phase one of the access control for indoor, uh, for the classrooms and offices, uh, continues to go well, as well as the new intercom alert system. Uh, phase one is scheduled to be completed this summer. And in the five-year capital, if you remember, we've asked for funding for, uh, phase two. Uh, construction update, we got Brentwood Middle School, the roof truss installation's complete. The brick facade installation is about sixty percent complete. And they started plumbing, electrical, mechanical, rough-in work, uh, on the second and third floors. The transportation building, uh, we were given the certificate of occupancy on February eleventh. Uh, once the furniture, uh, comes in, is, and installed, we'll start moving, uh, Mr. Fuller and the transportation, uh, team to the new building. The innovation center, the old building has been demolished, uh, grading activities continue, the building pad, they've started that, it should be complete in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and then I wanted to give you just a little bit of information, 'cause y'all voted on the out-of-zone and that went, uh, that opened up on February fourth. So far, Allison and her team have processed eight hundred and twenty-three applications so far for out-of-zone requests.
And the total last year was somewhere around twenty-four hundred?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So, we'll, we'll, that, that will close on April fifteenth.
Yes, sir.
Brian, um, if I may, Mr. Chair, uh, I, we, we, I touched briefly, and you touched briefly on, on our, some of, some of our, uh, some of our computer filters and protections on the, on the operations side. But another operations question, I know I've gotten, um, from, uh, from, from a couple of families related to plumbing. Uh, we've talked about this from time to time. I know that, that questions continue to come up about Fairview Elementary, uh, could you share a little bit about that?
Sure, thank you, thank you for the question. So, just a little history on the, the Fairview, uh, plumbing. In two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, there was some work done on the main sewer line, uh, outside the building. That was completed in two thousand seventeen. In two thousand twenty-four, this past year, uh, we received capital funds and, uh, to replace all the toilets with power assist toilets, which we've completed, the maintenance department have replaced all of those. And, um, in this next year's budget, annual budget, you'll see there's a nut, oh, I'm sorry. Also in this year was engineering to look at, if there's anything else that can be done to help with the, uh, issues at Fairview. Having said that, so there is money in there for next year based on what the engineer comes back and says. But just to give you a little background, there's plumbing, when you say plumbing issues, we have plumbing issues at every school, every day. And ninety percent of the clogs that, that you'll hear about or more, and Floyd can attest to this, is a foreign object or stuff going in the toilet that shouldn't be there, and we clear the line. Um, and we looked at the work orders, uh, for Fairview Elementary School since August first. And really, there's not a significant difference in Fairview Elementary and most of our other elementary schools. So, uh, not to say that we, we're not gonna look at what the engineer says and do some work, we've already done some work, uh, but we'll continue to monitor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hold on.
Any questions?
Yeah, Brian, from, when you said the eight hundred open zone compared to the twenty-four hundred last year, that, that includes everybody who's currently open zone, who has to submit a.
Yes, sir.
That, okay, so I just wanna, I just wanna clear that up.
Thank you for that.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, that's sibling, WCS employees who have to fill out the form, yes, sir.
But you gotta fill that, you gotta fill that form out every year.
That is correct.
If you're out of zone, so when we look at that, when we, when we look at that out-of-zone, out-of-zone sheet and it shows that there's, you know, four thousand people or whatever it was, I think it was ten, ten percent, it might have been three thousand.
Yes, sir.
But we get those, and everybody's gotta fill that out every year if they're coming back.
Yeah, so, so, so basically, as I read it, about a third of those we anticipate asking have filled out the form so far.
But they got, I mean, they got another two months.
They've got, they've got, yeah, they've got two and a half months. Um, it's, it's, so that's, that's why, that's why Brian shared that.
Thanks, Jim.
It's just worth a reminder for those folks.
Twenty-four hundred sounded like a lot, and then you think about it, but it's not.
No, that's, yeah.
I guess, I guess, like, the question, the question would be, the real question will, you know, next, next time, or maybe for Monday, would, would be, you know, how many, how many new requests did we get last year, um, compared, and this year?
I'll check with Allison, see if you can.
Yeah, well, to your point, seven or eight percent of our students are attending out-of-zone. It's, it's in that range.
And are all the, um, the students able to get where they want to be?
We don't know yet because it, it, we, we, we'll, we'll close that out on April fifteenth. But as of right now, Brian, I don't think any, any particular location is closed.
As of right now, that is correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
And by the way, when I say closed, I wanna encourage the public who's watching, just because we get the numbers doesn't mean you should stop, you should not apply because under the state rules, there's a lottery if there is one that goes over. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair.
All right, we ready, any other questions? All right, the chair report, the only thing I've got is, uh, we're meeting on Tuesday night for our board member, our board, uh, meeting, the eighteenth at six-thirty. Uh, let's see, okay, new business, uh, got any questions on new business?
If I may, Mr. Chair, um, uh, item A, the.
Is the budget, of course.
I only have one item tonight.
Right.
You know, we love these kinds, 'cause it's, hey, we, we're getting money. Um, the state last year, um, had a pot of money, uh, that they could reallocate for, to help offset some of the costs for special, um, special ed transportation. And so there was one pot, you applied for it, and then they allocated out to the districts. And so our allocation was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. And so this is just an amendment to accept that and to be able to apply it to the, uh, bus, bus lines.
No, we'll take it.
We will gladly take, we will gladly take that, that kind of money. And that's the only one I've got.
Any other questions?
Could we, a little five-minute bathroom break? Would that be okay?
I'm sorry?
Five-minute bathroom break, is anybody opposed to that, I can sneak out of?
Oh, you need a break?
I need a break.
You need a break? Well, take ten, five, ten, what do we do?
You wanna make it six, split the difference?
Six minutes. All right. Okay, next up, we all sat over there? Okay. Hey, I got a cowbell on my Sunday school class. But anyhow, okay, we got Dana is gonna talk about, uh, board policies for first readings.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, it, it'd be nice, but I think we skipped about three or four items.
I was ready, though, Mr. Cash.
Well, I asked if there was any questions on that.
Oh, okay.
Is there, well, I know one, I, Jay, I'm sorry. Ouch, let's, let's go, school fees. Do you wanna make?
Family tuition rate.
Can we talk about each of these?
Please, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want, I just thought, I, I asked the question.
So, Mr. Chair, uh, family tuition rate, I wanna give you guys a brief description of that. Um, uh, the document that Rachel prepared in the packet shows a projection of a per pupil expenditure that we include for our family tuition rate. Our board policy does not allow students to attend from out of county except in, in some very limited situations. One of them may be that the, the family has a non-contingent contract to purchase a home during the semester, in which case they will pay the family tuition rate, or can, their child can move in, and if they move in during that semester, we reimburse it. Uh, also, the, the, uh, policy does allow students in the second semester of their junior year and. later, if they move out of county to finish their career here, they would pay the family tuition rate. So those are basically the limitations, so it's rare that this is used, but we do have that obligation to approve that annually based on that per pupil expenditure. Or per pupil revenue, maybe, Rachel?
Okay, any questions on the tuition? All right, let's move on to approval of school fees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I did wanna mention one change that we've made, really, in the descriptors related to this, and then there's a couple of items that our leadership team has made a request for a change. We have added some language to the voluntary fees based on that ongoing discussion that we have about the fact that the state calls them fees, but these aren't. For anything, any provision of services during a school day, classes, et cetera, all students are entitled to a free education. We are allowed to make a request for supports, and the state calls them fees, and Mr. Galbraith, I'm gonna speak for you just briefly, Mr. Galbraith routinely mentions this and says, "Why call them fees when they're not?" or some version of that, and he's right. But the state does call them fees, so we've added some language there that voluntary fees are requested for classroom support and are not required of any student. We try to make that a point of emphasis. From a funding standpoint, we are not at the point where we feel like we can't ask for these. I know there's been some discussion about, well, could we do something with fundraisers, et cetera, and we see this as an additional fundraiser. We polled our principals and actually asked this question. Are there any of you who would like to forego those fees and take a shot at treating this as a pure fundraiser without that? At this stage, we don't have any takers. I will tell you, as I'm evaluating alternate funding sources based on one of the goals you guys have set for me, this is on my plate to continue to do some research on. But I felt like it was important to share those, especially since in the past, we've had some detailed discussions related to it. Opened any questions you may have?
Jay, you got any questions?
Not so much a question, maybe, but the, I guess we talked last year about making this more of a donation, and looking at it from a, you know, I just don't understand why we're making non-required fees to a school that can accept donations that qualify for donations and matching funds from employers while we're not doing that. So, we could easily, like, I guess, we asked the teachers, or we asked the principals what they would like to do, but they're not paying the fees. So, I'd really like to, I'd really like to understand, parents, if, I mean, look at the Invest in Your Kids programs that everybody does instead of fundraisers, and they know what those go for. This is obviously different, we do, everybody in our high schools, because what's been on my mind for the last 12 years, but has, they give to their individual, to their PTO through their class, I think everybody does it that way, and they're asked to make a donation of, you know, a hundred dollars, or a hundred and fifty dollars, or whatever. You know, we, all the elementary schools went to a fee, as per Julie's note, and it's much smaller. The high school gets big because you're talking about a fee per every, per every class. But if we ask the parents for a voluntary donation, and some of them can get matching funds, I mean, you're reducing the, you're reducing the net impact of that fee by thirty percent, and what you find is, we're really giving, like, everybody will, if you give them the opportunity to give more, some people won't give anything, and some people don't give anything now, but the people who you're asking for donations for, the people that can, will give more. And I just, nobody takes away revenue source, I get it, but we have the potential to make it a tax deductible donation and get more money than we're getting, and not make everybody feel like they're getting nickel and dime, which they are. So, can we take donations?
Yes, but, Rachel?
I'll speak to that, and sure, a school can take a donation, the issue with the, with what we're, the fee, is that you're getting something in return, so it's not a donation. You are getting, your child is getting, whether it's an English book, they actually take that with them. Anything that's used as a fee, the kid is consuming, and I don't mean eating, but consuming it, whether it's manipul-, whatever they've got that they're working on. So, if you're dissecting, you consume that item, and it's no longer of use. So you're taking, you have something, you're taking away, that is not a donation. I'm specifically saying, for biology, I pay this fee, and in return, that's what I get. In English, I'm paying this fee, and I take that novel home with me. That's the difference in a fee and a donation. So you could say, no fees, but then all of those items, which shouldn't go out to the kids, they would be kept in schools.
No, but they're not required now, and we're supplying.
I would make the argument that you can't, you can't call it a donation when it truly is a fee, because it is covering that item. A donation is, here you go, and I get nothing in return.
But if we take away this fee, if we took away this fee schedule completely, and said, we gotta, we're gonna ask for a donation of, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars a kid, or whatever the, whatever it comes down to, more if you can do it, obviously, you don't have to do any. If we don't have a fee schedule, then if we give the kid an English workbook, then they can take it.
It's a philosophical difference in opinion, is where I would leave.
Well, I see what you're saying.
If it's included in the taxpayer-funded, free and appropriate public education, then we can provide them as per they sign up for English class, and they get an English workbook. Like, I mean, they don't have to give it back.
In the context of that goal to find alternate sources of revenue, one of the things that's on my mind, and frankly, on my plate, that I place on my plate, is to get some specific expert tax advice for somebody who does income tax work, to see how we could structure that. I think there's still an opportunity there. One of the things I'm gonna explore is, can we do alternates? And maybe potentially transition into what you're talking about. So, I'm not done with this, from a timing perspective, we are recommending these fees for right now, but I feel, I think it's more of a practical tax issue, what mechanism will work that someone's tax advisor can tell them you can get a deduction?
Yeah, this is, but we had, this is the same conversation we had last year, and we said we're gonna look into it last year, and so we didn't, and now we're, well, it's too late, I guess we'll just have to look at it in six more years, when, you know?
I know, I know exactly what you're saying, because last year, we had this exact conversation, and we put it on your list, and I said that last year would be the last time I would vote in favor of this, so I'm with you, Jay.
All right, I got two votes.
All right, thank you.
I'm on his side, too, because I'd like to know what items are we asking fees for?
They're on the list.
They're on the list.
They're on that list, every single thing there, for classrooms.
Could we do it, I tread lightly using this word, because, but scholarships, like if we had some type of scholarship fund that would be like a public-private partnership where we could have, I know there's businesses who would love to, and we've talked about that as far as the goals, too, is to have some type of fund, where some families would say, "I'm happy to pay this," and other families are like, "This is a lot, is there a scholarship available?" Could we do it that way? And that, I mean, would that kind of remedy the problem about the goods?
Well, to your question, we don't require, we don't require it of anyone, it's an additional revenue source, and what Mr. Galbraith is basically arguing is, if we find another method to get that revenue source, it could actually be a win-win. That's the essence of what you're talking about. So, there are times, especially in extracurricular activities, when that, that you described happens with a PTO supporting, if an athletics team needs blank amount, and they haven't gotten enough for the extracurricular, the booster club or the PTO will fill in that gap.
And to be clear, though, I'm only talking about the academic fees, I'm not talking about the participation fees.
That makes sense, yeah.
So, like, it's completely appropriate for extracurricular activities, and to ask for the, you know, a hundred and fifty bucks to do drama club, or whatever, the chorus, and all the extracurricular athletic fees, like, all that stuff, completely, I mean, and I think we do a great job in making that, you know, required enough, that if, basically, if you're able, you are expected to pay it, and obviously, if you can't, then we're not gonna exclude anybody from participating. But it's the academic fees that are just, you know, we're, it's a million bucks, it should be in our budget, we should get the money as much as we can, so that's, I just wanna make that clear.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, the Encore Summer Program fees, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the Encore program is a summer program run by our elementary schools for what I think of as camp items, unrelated to what the state called as summer camps. So, this is the summer program for elementary schools to come and enjoy things, enjoy some activities during the summer, and Dr. Royer has included that memo for the cost for that summer program.
Okay, any questions? Okay, next, Superintendent Evaluation Instrument.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, included in the packet is the Superintendent's Evaluation Instrument, that is exactly like last year's. There have been years where the board has discussed potential changes to it. I will tell you, it's basically broken up into two sections, for those who haven't experienced this yet. One, an evaluation section for the goals that you set for me annually, and then Section Two is the state-required items for superintendent's evaluations. So certainly open to any questions you may have prior to the event, prior to the vote, but what I've found is, just to be as direct as I can, your comments are a whole lot more valuable to me than your numbers, than your scores, because I've seen the difference in what standards you set, as well, what standards board members set. So, regardless of how the structure is set up, I'm gonna be more interested in finding out your comments. Again, certainly open to any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Okay, now we're ready for Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. The first policy for first reading is the Public Records Request. There, on the second and third page, are some changes in red. Those are the result of our discussion at the policy meeting, to do some rewording of those sections, to make it a little bit more clear, and then on the next page, I think we changed the word from, I think it was some emails, to communications at the bottom of that page, yes. We had a robust discussion during our policy meeting, and those are the two changes that occurred regarding this policy. And staff recommends this policy approval for first reading. Mr. Cash, you want me to just keep going, or do you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, we were pretty much, everyone was at the board, or the policy meeting.
Yes, sir.
So, I think everybody's aware.
Of the, yes, sir.
Discuss these at his first reading.
It is, yes, sir, so the next policy is?
Actually, I had some things I wanted to talk about on this policy.
Okay.
Before we go on. Because I was, I brought some of this up in kind of continuation of the robust conversation, there's two points that I really want us to look at, and it's on page three, line forty-four, and that's two G. So I feel strongly that communication is just too broad, when it says, when the personal records of a Williams County Board of Education member, it goes on to the next page, is requested, from what case law has shown us, especially in Tennessee, we have a case, and I think I shared it with Superintendent Golden, case laws indicated that communication must be in connection with the transaction of official business for school board members, and I think that needs to be shown here. So I have some recommended wording to amend this, starting at line forty-four, instead of saying whenever, start with, if communications to and/or from Williamson County School Board Members are requested, and the communications have been determined by the coordinator to be in connection with the transaction of official business, the board member shall be given three days' notice of the request, and include the reason that such communication is considered public record. I think we need to put the cart, put the horse in front of the cart, rather, and so we need to first prove that, or at least give verification, that the communications that are about to be revealed in public records are, in fact, a transaction of official business for the board member. So I'd like to see that policy, and then there's one other change.
So I will thank you for this, unfortunately, I haven't, this is the first I'm hearing about it, so I haven't had an opportunity to research it. My first reaction, however, is, the notice provision with the three days is to allow, obviously, either employees or board members to know about the request. There's not going to be a guarantee within those three business days that all of those records have been reviewed, to be able to tell you what is or is not included. We, right now, are averaging at least a public records request a day, and we're obviously getting those processed as quickly as possible, but I don't wanna guarantee that within three days of receiving the request, we would have had an opportunity to run the request and review all the documents. I do think there may be something that we can do with that, but I would like to review that to make sure it's feasible.
So Donna, I've got a question, so this G is more in line, is, to me, it's more, it's more talking about the specific response, or whatever it calls, the notice that we're getting, this is kind of the notice provision. I think what you're, I think what you're asking for, and I don't know where, I'm wondering where it is in the policy, is more along the lines of what is discoverable by a records request, and so, because that's a, that's like, it fits into a whole bigger picture, it's almost like, but where would that be defined, Dana, not only for, not only for personnel or board members, but for, but for any, what, like, basically what defines a public record? Like, that's where, that's, it seems to be that definition is what, is what she's looking for.
Sure, and she mentioned a case, I'm gonna assume which case that is, there is a case that talks about, more than one, but a case that talks about public records and says that it's not the form of the record, so it's not that it's an email, it's not that it's a text message, but it's really the content of the record. And if the record is talking about business that would, you know, be before the board, then it would be a public record. I think at the policy meeting, we talked a little bit about this, I think the example that I came up with was, off the top of my head, a board member who, there was an email using your official WCS email between you and your spouse, trying to determine what kind of pizza you wanted for dinner. I'd argue that's not discussing business.
I think that's an easy one.
But if it's regarding a matter that's going to be voted on, if it's, you know, discussing a policy, if it's discussing, then we look at that content. And that's why I said, I think the purpose of this was, again, to provide notice, but I don't wanna have a guarantee that within three days, some of our requests are thousands of emails. It sometimes takes us weeks to go through those, to redact information, and to look for confidential information, and is it in fact responsive to the records request? and is it in fact responsive to the records request?
So, yeah, so I think it, uh, we might, we might just, and I'm, and I'm fine, we can talk about this in, in policy. I think it's, it'll be a good, a good discussion again, but it might be, you know, a sub-bullet of number two, maybe, um, when, as we're defining public records, if we wanna, if we wanna add a description.
On page one?
Maybe, but.
On page one?
Um, on page, on page.
On page one, I think.
On page one, yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Under definitions and.
I see what you're saying.
And Jay, I think that is appropriate.
Yeah.
Let me look at that. Yes, I think that makes sense, um.
Cause I don't, I mean, if, I don't think it's, it's almost, it's on, I, I wanna make sure that it, that whatever we put there covers employees and, and board members. It doesn't need to be one or the other. It could be broad enough to, to show that it needs to be. Cause either one, it needs to be transact, you know, transacting business and not something of a, of a personal nature or whatever. But, um, so I think it's, but, but I, I think the important, the important thing is it would, I think it belongs under definitions and not under the notice. Then we can talk about what the notice means as data.
I think as long as it's somewhere in the policy, that's what I'd like to see. And, um, we, we can work that out in policy, but I, you know, that was something that I really feel strongly about, um, that that should be there.
Donna, if you would, can we make sure we get that language to Dana?
Yeah, I can, I can email, yeah. I was working on this today. So, um, the only other thing that I, I, am I jumping in front of anybody?
Well, I would just, with the, um, back down to the, the language, um, on page three,
what would be, so there, there, in, in G there, line forty-four. So what, what is the purpose of changing it from emails to communications?
So that was the feedback from board members at the policy meeting. Um, my original language was emails. That is typically what the requests are for board members. Um, I can't recall who made, who made the suggestion, uh, during the meeting, but it was to expand it because it might not be just emails, um, to communications. Uh, that either, that to me is not a sticking point, um, e- either way. However, however you want that language to be, um, but that is feedback from our policy meeting.
I think I might, I don't, I, I remember discussing it. I, I could've, I could've recommended it cause when I saw emails, like I know to Dana's previous point, it's not the form of the communication. It's the content of the communication. And so.
Could be voicemail.
So it could, it could be, it could be voicemail, it could be, um, it could be written.
Calendar invite.
It could be other written communication, it could be email, it could be text message. So like it, it's more communication that.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah.
Well, and I think.
I remembered it, but I couldn't remember what we were, what the context of that was.
I think it was also to make the point that it isn't limited to just the emails, that board members would have noticed no matter what the communication was, um, if I'm remembering correctly.
Okay, and the other thing I wanted to look at, I think it was page four, um, line five. This, I, I had questions about this in the policy meeting and maybe I should start with a question, but, um, looking at the state law and then when we look at our Williamson County policy, it says that Bossers is our coordinator for every department in the county with the exception of sheriff. But Bossers isn't our coordinator. We have actually, from what I see, several coordinators. And so I just kind of wanted to first of all ask, I brought this up, you're not tracking.
Is that county, county government? I think you're referring to Williamson County Government, which is a different entity. So it may be that they've posted.
But I guess at the state level, it didn't seem to, maybe I can look back at this. Um, it didn't seem to imply that Williamson County was a separate entity.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so at the, so at the state level, then it comes down to the county level and the county level says all departments in, within the entire county, Williamson County, Brian, or Bossers is the coordinator, except for the sheriffs. And so we've got to, we've got some inaccuracy.
We are not Williamson County Government. We are constitutionally a separate entity. So when, like, when county government speaks for all county government, they're not speaking for us.
Well, we probably need to get them to change that in there.
Or maybe a reference to schools or something.
Yeah, if I may, the policy for the county has got several coordinators. Um, each department's got one. What you're thinking about, to which you're referring to is Bradley's, that is our archives.
Okay.
And he basically is the first point. So when somebody's got one, they send it to him and then he distributes it to the different public record coordinators depending on the department.
So how many coordinators do we have at the county level?
We have, oh, wow. Um, well, each department, so, you know, you're talking fifteen.
Okay.
You know, twelve, fifteen. Cause you've got them for trustees, uh, register of deeds office, clerk's office, court clerk's office, juvenile, uh, there's, you know. And the sheriff, we separated because.
Right.
The amount that they get, the amount of rec- of public records requests they get are many times more than any other department that we get them for. And that's why we've kind of separated them out. And their records are a little bit different than the regular public records. There's gonna be some restrictions on what you can provide them and not, that are not in regular just.
Gotcha.
So Bobby, did I describe that accurately, the difference between the schools and county government?
You did.
Okay, thank you. Um, have we considered having one coordinator and then underneath the coordinator custodians? Or do we want to have, I think we have four different coordinators?
We have three coordinators. Um, my office, I coordinate public records, um, if it is not media that goes through communications or, um, personnel records that goes through HR. We work and collaborate, um, together, communicate really well. Um, I think that was the structure when I got here and I, and it works. So I'd recommend we continue that structure, um.
It could, it could be done. Um, but our, our, our experience is that it's more efficient with a media going to Carol and it, and anybody looking for HR records going to, going to HR.
I guess my only concern was just that when we have several different people doing the same job, um, it, there could be differentiation in how they carry it through. So, but if, if, if we haven't seen that problem, then. Yeah, I trust it.
I, I, I see what you're saying. Um.
I just was, just bringing it up.
We'll do it, we'll, we'll have a conversation with our leadership team and, and specifically ask that question.
And what typically happens, just so you kind of understand how the sausage is made, those requests initially go to me, Carol, or Vicky. And then, um, they are generally then processed through my office. Um, so that we, we do communicate and make sure, and I, and I think that's a valid point that you made, to make sure they are handled the same. Um, I just think they are, um, especially with the media, they're so used to contacting, uh, Carol Byrd's song that I don't know that they would contact me even if they, even if we asked them to. But yes, that's a, that's a good, it's a good point.
So Dana, really, I mean, if, if that's the way we work, then, then ultimately, ultimately, your general counsel is the, is the coordinator. Um, I mean, you're, like, you're, you're just describing where the, where the initial request goes, goes to. Um, so.
So it does, and, and you're right. So it, it on the front end goes there, but then behind the scenes, we are communicating. But then if it is HR and someone has asked to see a personnel file, it's then HR who is making sure they see the personnel file, get copies, redact it, or Carol's office doing the same thing. We just make sure we are all in lockstep, following the policy. Um, so, yeah.
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 But to your point, Jay, each one of those three have that same, all the same responsibilities.
Well, except for, except for Dana's responsibility is to collect it and review it before it goes out.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so I mean, it really, it, I mean, it really reads that, that Dana is the, is the coordinator. Um, and for, for requests from these areas, here's your main point of contact. But ultimately, ultimately Dana's gonna process, I mean, every, they're, Vicki's gonna touch it first, but Dana's gonna touch it last. And that, that's the definition of a coordinator, so.
I'm in the middle. I, really and truly.
Yeah.
Because it's, I, so to your point, the confidential information, yes, my office is going to touch.
Right.
But then it's go, if it's media, it's going back to Carol's office.
Yeah, that's fair.
Um, or it's going back to HR.
But, but I mean, you're coordinating it, right? Like, so, I mean, but by definition, I don't know, just.
Not sure.
I, 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 I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of saying to, I mean, for Donna's concern was, was that multiple people are doing the same job and I don't, I don't think that, I don't think they are. I think you're, everybody's doing their job and, and everybody's got one. It, it, it doesn't real, it's not really reflected here. I don't even know if it has to be. I think it, it's working, but I, I, this is more of a process question than maybe a wording of the policy question, but I'm good with that.
Anyone else? These are all for first reading and we'll be going back over them in policy again, so that's where to handle this.
Okay. Um, I will move to the next one, which is, uh, policy four point three zero one, interscholastic sports. Um, one change to this policy on, um, page two. Um, and at the policy meeting, uh, it was requested that I make certain that this provision only applies to school-sponsored athletic events. I, I reviewed the policy again with that lens. Feel very comfortable that this is only as to, uh, school-sponsored athletic events, um, not to club sports which start, um, those conditions and, and parameters start on the next page. Um, we do recommend approval of first reading for this policy.
Questions? Okay, criminal background checks.
Okay. So, uh, criminal background checks, as we talked about at the policy meeting, there, um, Tennessee is now a member of the RAP back, um, which, uh, program, which, um, all of our employees must go through, uh, the rap back program. Um, we, other categories of individuals who may have close proximity to children, which for our case are contractors and volunteers, they are currently, uh, being background checked, our regular background check process. Our recommendation is that that continue. Um, so the updated, uh, parts in blue are regarding, uh, contractors and, and volunteers, but also regarding the update as, um, our employees are accepted into the rap back program.
Okay, any questions on the rap back program?
Just that it's spelled R A P. I saw it somewhere spelled W R A P.
Like gift wrap?
Hopefully not here, but. Yeah, and it just, just as a reminder, we mentioned the RAP is the Record of Arrest and Prosecution.
Okay.
All right. And if it is okay, I'm going to do the last two together, um, line and staff relations. Uh, the changes that have been made to that policy are, um, taken from the next policy, five point eight oh three, organization charts. Uh, the recommendation is to, um, approve for first reading the lines in blue and to, um, delete organization charts since it is, um, really the two policies are very similar. So recommend, um, approval of this policy for first reading.
Questions? Well, if there's no questions, you want, uh, Rachel to go back to any of the pages before? No, never mind. Yeah, we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Cash.